All right, everybody. It's six o'clock straight up. So I welcome everybody to the Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For roll call, for the sake of the minute taker, Commissioners present are Townsend, Elliott, Craig, Hench, Padron, and our new Commissioner, Mr. Chad Wade. Welcome, Chad. Glad you joined us.
Glad to be here.
And Mark Science is absent today. Next item on the agenda. Is public discussion of any item not on the agenda? Now is the opportunity for any member of the public that would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on some item that's not on tonight's agenda. Now is their opportunity. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to the Commission? Seeing no race up to the podium, I take that as a no. So we'll pass, go on to the next item. Now we're at our Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code Amendment section. First item up is case number CPA22-0002. This is a request to set a public hearing for November 16th, 2022, on a proposed amendment to the Southwest District Plan. Kirk, do you want to say anything before we entertain a motion for set the public hearing? All right. Could I have a motion from a member of the Commission to set the public hearing for November 16th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Emma Harvath Hall?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend is her second.
Second.
Second by Padron. Discussion?
I have one comment for staff, and that is, if you could put some more street names on some of those maps, it would be very helpful. Because like, I'm going, Kitty Lee Lane, where the heck is that? And I'm looking, and I'm going, I have no idea. I mean, I had to, you know, go find another map. In the olden days, before Google, it would have been a lot harder. So some extra street names on those maps would be great.
Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor said they'd have a public hearing for this particular case number for November 16th, 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 6 to 0. Next item up is case number REZ22-0011. This is consideration of an amendment to Title 14, zoning to enhance land use regulations related to solar energy systems and further climate action goals. And Kirk Lehman will be our presenter. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you. Okay. Capture the plan. Okay, so we are talking about REZ22-0011, looking at solar amendments, and then amendments related to some climate action goals that the city has. So the background is, this started as a discussion about solar amendments specifically, and it kind of ballooned out from there as we're talking about just sustainability initiatives. Just to give you some background, prior to 2019, we treated solar energy uses either as basic utility uses for larger-scale solar energy systems, or if it's accessory to a use, it's treated as an accessory mechanical structure. So in 2019, we took a look at our code specifically to separate out utility-scale ground-mounted solar from those basic utility uses. At that time, we were looking at trying to expand solar uses into some public lands. We have not moved forward with any projects in that regard, but we did start to incorporate some definitions like solar energy systems. We specified the utility-scale ground-mounted solar with some standards that were different. So some of that lexicon started entering our code in 2019. However, we continued to regulate accessory solar energy systems, so if they're with another principal use, continued to regulate that as mechanical structures. So early in 2022, the Johnson Clean Energy District completed a community-sourced solar feasibility study. As part of that, they provided lots of recommendations that the Climate Action Commission then came together, formed a working group to look at solar readiness and solar accessibility, and identified some high-priority items that they wanted to try and accomplish more quickly. One of those was just evaluating the zoning code to see, you know, are there gaps in our zoning code regarding solar? See if there's other things that we can do to promote solar readiness and/or friendliness, and just generally look at best practices and try and figure out what we can do to improve the code. So now we are coming before you today with this amendment to address some of these items that were brought up in that study. So in terms of our current regulations, we kind of have three general pots that I want to talk about. The first is accessory solar energy systems. These are solar energy systems that are tied to another principal use. They cannot be a standalone principal use, but they are regulated as mechanical structures in our code, and they are allowed administratively. However, there's nothing in the code that explicitly links mechanical structures to solar energy systems. It's just been, that's how the code's been interpreted over time, and so it's more of a knowledge thing that if you're familiar with the code, you know it, but if you're not, then you don't. So it's not explicitly linked. There are some specific use standards that come with accessory solar energy systems. And I talk about it in the packet. It varies between single-family residential, industrial, and all other zones. Generally, single-family is a little more lenient in some cases, especially for single-family uses. Industrial is also relatively lenient, but for other uses, there are some standards for location, such as setbacks that are pretty friendly to solar. Then there's also some screening standards, and so those primarily affect things that are not single-family uses. So that's kind of the accessory solar energy system pot, if you will. And then there's the utility-scale ground-mounted solar, which was created in 2019. That is a standalone principal use, and it is where there's a solar energy system that's one acre in size or larger. So those are allowed provisionally in industrial and public zones. They do require special exceptions in commercial, riverfront crossings, and research zones, but they are not allowed in residential and form-based zones. We are not providing any recommendations regarding the utility-scale ground-mounted solar because it was relatively recently adopted, and we think that some of the thought that went behind it is still relevant today. So we are leaving that alone. Most of the standards that we're looking at are tied to those accessory standard uses, as well as some other standards that I'll go through. One other thing I did want to point out is in our historic overlay districts and historic conservation districts, typically any exterior improvements do have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for review and approval. They did pre-approve some historic or some solar energy systems, as long as they meet some criteria, such as being rear-facing on buildings, being close to the roof surface, and angled at the same angle as the roof surface, making sure that it's trying to get away from the street elevation. And if those standards are met that I mentioned in the packet, then it can be approved administratively. So that is one way that the city has tried to streamline solar in historic districts. If it doesn't meet those standards, it doesn't mean it can't be approved. It just means that it goes before the Historic Preservation Commission. But that is another set of regulations that I just wanted to touch on briefly as well. So in terms of those proposed amendments, then, we have four general proposed amendments. The first is to add and clarify definitions within the code. The second is to limit regulatory barriers to solar energy systems. The third is to look at regulatory incentives to try and encourage solar energy. And this is where, as we discussed with staff, there are some other climate action goals that we can, that we also want to incentivize, and so we included that in these incentives as well. And then fourth, again, as we are discussing, accessory mechanical structures, and we also regulate EV charging stations the same way. So we brought in some EV parking-ready requirements as well, as part of this amendment. So the first is really regarding definitions. It's pretty much as simple as, we didn't have a definition of mechanical structure in the code. There's no linkages between mechanical structures and solar energy system definitions within the code. So really, what we're doing is adding cross-references between all these things. So if you're someone who's never been to the code before, you're not very familiar with it, but you see a search bar, you can search solar energy systems, and then you can figure out how it's regulated within the code and follow the steps through the code accordingly. That's really what that definition section is. The second is tied to the removal of potential regulatory barriers. Now, I say it's removing regulatory barriers. In some cases, it's clarifying because some of these things are things that are already understood to be regulated a certain way. So for example, our code has exceptions for height for certain mechanical structures that are on top of buildings. This is really just specifying that solar energy systems are one of those. So that's an example of, it's something that's been an understanding of the code, but it's trying to explicitly bring some of those things to the front because height limits has been linked as a barrier to solar energy systems. The second is related to maximum lot coverage standards. So again, this is an example of clarifying the code where maximum lot coverage means that there's a maximum amount of the lot area that can be covered by a building. Building does not include solar energy systems as a ground-mounted use, and so it's really just adding in to the definition to specify, you know, solar energy systems don't count towards this. Trying to make some of those linkages that were understood implicitly, make them more explicit for the use of the public. Some other ones that were modified, these are more in the, in lines of removal of potential barriers. One is removing the screening requirement for ground-mounted solar energy systems. So that was already the case within, for single-family uses. The screening requirement that exists is that there's S2, which is the variable height screening, but that can prevent solar access for solar energy systems. It can be a barrier to setting up solar energy systems, and so staff is recommending that that screening requirement be removed for ground-mounted solar. And that would also apply in commercial and multifamily zones as well. Another one is to remove a concealed-from-public-review requirement, is what I'm calling it. It's really a requirement that solar energy systems be either setback from the roof, designed in such a way that it faces into the roof and/or is screened from ground level. So in many cases, we already interpret it to be designed as compatible to the roof. So it's kind of taking that interpretation and applying it a little larger. So if you have a single-family home and you have a solar panel that's on the roof already, you know, that's something that we see as being compatible with the roof generally, and so this is kind of carrying that into other zones as well. And then the, one of the larger new ones in terms of removal of regulatory barriers is adding a new minor modification. So minor modifications are a process that adds flexibility within the code. It's an administrative process. It does have a public hearing that's associated with it, but the determination is made by the building official. To be approved for a minor modification, it must meet five approval criteria. One of those is that special circumstances must apply to the property, which make it impractical to comply with the standard or warrant a modification of some sort. So there are some other ones about effects on neighboring properties, being complying with other applicable statutes, et cetera. Really, really, the idea is, is this a situation where, for whatever reason, the standards aren't allowing it to work? And is it not going to have a negative impact? If so, it's, you could get a minor modification. So this just adds in a process for that, for solar energy systems when it comes to the standards that regulate mechanical structures. One of the reasons that we looked at this was because we did have an example where there was a fellow who lived on a corner lot, which meant that he had two front yards. There is a location standard that you can't have a solar energy system between, within the front setback, and he had trees in the back of his property. So the only place that he could actually put a solar energy system that could collect solar energy was in the side front yard. That was something that we couldn't do anything about at the time, but, you know, in certain circumstances, there might be standards that, you know, a minor modification might be warranted. So we wanted to add in that flexibility there. And then finally, the last one is something that's actually in the subdivision code. It's in Title 15, so it's not something that you would typically review, but I did want to bring it to your attention. And that is that the state empowers municipalities to prevent unreasonable restrictions on solar collectors. And that's unreasonable deed restrictions, which generally you see in the form of HOA covenants. So we did add in what the state code empowers us to do, which is that new deed restrictions of unreasonable restricting solar collectors would no longer be allowed anymore. So that also is included in this collection of potential barriers that we're trying to remove.
But it doesn't do anything about past developments that...
Correct.
So they're grandfathered in forever?
State code does not empower us to address that.
Thank you.
The next is the larger change. So this is something where we were talking about, you know, if we really want to encourage solar energy systems, we can't just remove the barriers. We should also try to provide some sort of incentive, something to offset the cost of putting in a solar energy system, for example. And as we were talking about it, there were a couple other things that we also want to incentivize, which would be, you know, seeing electrification of properties where they get their regular energy usage from electricity and not natural gas. So that's something where, you know, you can, you can convert as much of the solar energy or as much of the energy system electricity into solar as possible, but if you're still burning gas, it doesn't really address it. And then also, look at the building code, specifically the International Energy Conservation Code. Since we can't adopt more strict energy conservation codes, we can have people voluntarily comply and receive incentives for it. So those were kind of the three items that we looked at in terms of regulatory incentives that might be voluntary. And so we came up with two possible incentives that would help offset some of that cost. One is a residential density bonus, whereby the property owner would be able to have a higher density. And then one is a parking reduction whereby parking, which costs money to provide when it need to be provided, up to a certain amount. So what we're talking about in terms of applicability, then, the residential bonus would basically apply in any zone where residential uses are allowed and that regulate by density. So when we're talking about density, we're talking about standards related to minimum lot size for single-family homes, and we're talking about minimum lot area per unit standards that apply to multifamily uses. There are some residential and commercial zones that don't regulate by density. So for example, CB5 and CB10 do not have a standard like that where they say you can't put more than X units in. You know, if you can fit it, you can fit it, is kind of how it works in those zones. So those zones aren't affected by this, and riverfront crossings is the same way. And the form-based code, which we recently adopted, regulates, doesn't really regulate by density. It regulates more by form. It does have different building types, but they all have different densities, and so it doesn't really apply to those either. This is really in our conventional residential and commercial zoning code section. In terms of process, it was, staff is recommending that it be an administrative process, either through site plan or building permit review. In some cases, it might be, might occur through a OPD rezoning. In those cases, it would be a legislative process because it would be part of that OPD plan, and it would have to be requested as part of that. So the way that the bonus was constructed, then, it is, again, I said, there are three general eligibility criteria. For each of those, you could get a 10% decrease in minimum lot size per unit or a decrease in the minimum lot size for each of those provisions met. So for your first one, you would get a 10% density bonus. For your second, you'd get a 20% density bonus, but it is capped at 25%. So if you did all three, you would only get a 25% density bonus. In terms of what those criteria are specifically, then, with regards to providing a solar energy system, it would have to equal 40% of the roof surface area. The idea being that, we talked about doing it as a percentage of energy consumption, but in some cases, you're going to have buildings with a smaller footprint that are taller, and in those cases, it may not make sense to have it be a percentage of the total energy consumption. And so looking at roof area, you want to make sure that you have roof for those solar energy systems. It's kind of similar to the way that we look at riverfront crossings when we're looking at density bonus there, or bonus height there. So that was the approach that we took, was as a percentage of the roof surface area. The second is looking at electricity for 100% of regular energy usage. The reason that we say regular energy usage is that in some cases, there might be emergency backup generators that we want to still be able to run on gas if, you know, something happens with the power system. So we're looking at regular energy usage. And then the third is constructing the building to the most current International Energy Conservation Code. So that was pretty straightforward. In terms of the parking reduction, then, it pretty much mirrors this, but it would be eligible for all uses in all zones, as currently written, and it would again be an administrative process unless it went through an OPD. It would give you a parking reduction that's equal to, to the same amount of density bonus that would be awarded for the same criteria. And so I thought it would be helpful to go through what that might look like in a project because a lot of numbers, lots of figures, so I figured I'd walk through it. So one example I wanted to give was just, let's say that you're building a mixed-use building. Let's say that you have a 33,750-square-foot site. Let's say that it's Zone CC2, which is community commercial. It does allow a mix of uses, and that you are going to provide solar panels on the roof, equal to 40% of the roof area, and you're going to build to the most energy conservation code. So in that case, you're meeting two of the provisions. Therefore, you can get 20% bonus. So that would be a 20% density bonus and a 20% parking reduction. So what that would look like without the density bonus, assuming ground floor retail of about 5,100 square feet, you would typically be allowed to have 12 two-bedroom units based on that lot area. And with the minimum parking between the retail and the residential spaces, that would require 44 total parking spaces for that use. Now, if you're looking at a density bonus, then you would still have the same amount of retail. That's not affected by the proposed amendment. But with a 20% density bonus, you would lower the amount of square foot, the minimum square foot of lot area per unit. So that would allow you to have 15 two-bedroom units. So that's a 20% density bonus. And with regards to parking, then, that would increase your total parking typically. So the subtotal would be 50, but with a 20% density bonus, that would subtract out 10 spaces, and you would end up with 40 spaces. So without a bonus, again, you'd be looking at 12 units with 44 parking spaces, same retail. And with a bonus, you would be looking at 15 units with 40 spaces. So that's kind of how it works. It's not too terribly difficult, but it can be kind of complicated because the density bonus comes out before, and the parking bonus comes out after, but this is how it would be calculated in an example. And in some cases, you know, it's a voluntary incentive. People may not want to reduce parking. We often see commercial uses that overpark their sites. I would assume that many commercial buildings would still continue to overpark their sites, but it is an option for those if the proposed amendment is adopted as recommended.
But that would also be available to someone who built an entirely residential building?
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Well, we're just talking new construction only. Somebody couldn't just rehab their property and take advantage of some of these, could they by adding solar? And I guess you couldn't retrofit your house for those conservation measures.
So you could renovate a building. You would, if you can meet the requirements, you could renovate your building and potentially add more units. It would be, yeah, it would be allowed. They would just have to submit the permits and show that they meet the standards. The final kind of set of regulations that we're looking at are related to EV readiness, electric vehicle readiness. And what we're looking at is trying to facilitate the expansion of electric vehicle charging stations. So when we're talking about electric vehicle readiness, we're not talking about actually installing chargers. We're talking about providing conduit, making sure that there's dedicated circuits, making sure that it is able, in the future, to provide a Level 2 charger, which is kind of the standard charger that you would use for a vehicle. In terms of what we're looking at requiring, we would be saying for parking areas, which are five or more spaces, that 20% of spaces would have to be EV-ready. Again, that doesn't mean that they have to be, have spaces put in, but it means that they have to be ready for electric vehicle spaces in the future. And one of the reasons we looked at EV readiness rather than chargers is because it's pretty cost-effective to make sure that the space can have electrical vehicle charging stations in the future, especially compared to retrofitting spaces to be able to have chargers. But because it's, it's pretty cost-effective like this, we don't want to be too burdensome, especially as we're gearing up towards electrical, electric vehicles in the future. So we want to make sure that we have a balance between what we're requiring, what is actually out there right now, and then also what, what we're looking to require in terms of that. And so this would affect new construction. It would also affect potentially substantial redevelopment projects as well. So there are, any existing parking structure would become a non-conforming, non-conforming structure essentially, and then it would, if it has major expansions, then it might trigger the need to comply. But generally, existing parking structures could continue as is.
So if you apply that to your example on the screen before, 20% of those 40 spaces, which would be eight, in a parking lot, have to, they have to have the infrastructure to, at some point, make them.
Yep, that is what that requirement would be. And in terms of what EV readiness exactly entails, I can talk a bit about it.
How many? Can you say again?
Well, 20% of 40 is eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's looking at providing a dedicated branch circuit. It has to have a certain ampere in voltage, and it would have to have a junction box that is within charging distance of it so that in the future, charging infrastructure could be added. So my understanding is that it's a, it's a relatively small increase in cost to make it ready. It's a larger increase in cost to actually install the chargers.
Right.
Yeah, but plenty of them would be ready. So in terms of best practices and research, then, I mean, a lot of these came out of looking at best practices at other municipalities, looking at model ordinances. Some of the stuff we're already doing, which is pretty good. So for example, the biggest thing is streamlining solar review and permitting processes, which is allowing solar by right, having administrative review of those things. Those are things that the city already does. The problem is, it's hard to tell that we do it because our code doesn't explicitly link some of those things. The next set of best practices is related to removing those potential zoning barriers, so things like height setbacks, coverage requirements. Again, many of these things didn't apply already, but we want to make that clear that that's the case. And in some cases, such as screening requirements or other situations where we want to add flexibility, we just wanted to make sure that our code amendments flexibility, we just wanted to make sure that our code amendments would address those items. And then another one was looking at, you know, EV readiness or charging stations and requiring that as a percentage of parking. So, we went the EV-ready route, so we have a relatively high percentage that we're recommending for that, especially compared to other communities, but a lot of other communities require, you know, a certain percentage to be actual charging stations, and so, we figured, you know, we want to be able to facilitate the adoption of EV vehicles, and if people are going to have to constantly do costly improvements to retrofit, that's going to be a real barrier to, to, to adding.
How do you get, how does, how do we get from the ready, though, that you require to the charging station? How does that happen?
So, it would be installed when someone had a demand for it, essentially.
So, it's a resident or residents making a demand?
Yeah. Or in the case of, if it's condos where they own their parking spaces, it would be the residents being able to, to actually make those improvements themselves.
If their space is one of the EV-ready spaces?
Correct. In, in terms of incentives for renewable energy, that's something that's less common, it tends to be those communities that are really trying to encourage some of these climate action moves, really trying to meet climate action goals, but we see things like density and height bonuses, lot coverage bonuses, parking reductions. Staff determined that density and parking reductions are probably the two that apply the most in Iowa City, since a lot of these other standards don't seem to be terribly large incentives for development. And one of the big things with incentives is that you have to make sure that you're balancing the incentive with the requirement. So, you, people aren't going to use it if the incentive doesn't give them enough money to cover the cost of whatever additional public good we are asking them to do. And so, to get people to actually utilize it, you have to make sure that they are right size, and that's something that, a lot of these are relatively new, other folks that have done that have done them relatively recently, so we don't have a lot of data about success yet, but, you know, really trying to figure out what that right balance is, and it might be something that in the future, we say, you know, either we, we can dial these back a bit, or maybe we need to bump them up a bit if we actually want people to use them. So, it is something that's an ongoing process, but we tried to, to come up with something that we thought might motivate folks to take advantage of some of these bonuses. In terms of anticipated impacts, you know, there, there are several benefits, a lot of them I've discussed already, related to educational benefits, making sure that people understand the code and how solar fits into the code, reducing barriers, so folks who might not have been able to provide solar on their property before might now be able to provide solar, providing incentives that actually result in some of these climate action goals that we want to see, and some design flexibility as well, and then also supporting the transition to, towards electric vehicles as well. In terms of potential trade-offs, one thing that, that I really wanted to discuss was kind of the way that, the way that parking reductions work within our current code. So, the way that we currently deal with parking reductions, there are lots of different ways that you can reduce parking. So, in some cases, you can get a minor mod as a commercial use, and that's a 10% reduction. In other cases, you can get a 50% reduction if you're in unique use of some sort. In other cases, you can get 100% reduction if you're a historic property. If you share uses, you can get a 25% reduction. So, there are all these different ways that we do allow parking reductions, and it's kind of a menu that you would select from, where you would choose one. So, what this amendment does is add a new menu item that would do a 25% reduction, but a lot of these reductions range from generally 10% to 100%, and as you're getting on the higher end, usually 50% or above, then you also add in other reviews, such as the Board of Adjustment, for example. Administrative reviews tend to be around 25% at the max. But, one of those items is a fee in lieu of parking, which we allow in the Riverfront Crossings District and downtown. So, within that district, if someone is unable or, or would prefer to pay a fee in lieu of parking in, within that parking district, then they can pay that fee and they could not provide somewhere between 50 and 100% of their parking spaces. But what those fees do is they go towards a collected pot of money that goes towards providing public parking downtown, so that's what pays for parking structures, expansion and maintenance of parking structures, any public parking spaces, or those sorts of improvements. So, adding a process that would allow a 25% reduction, as currently written, could reduce the amount of money that comes into fees in lieu of parking downtown, so that really is a potential trade-off I wanted to mention. So, that, that's really the, the primary trade-off that we see, you know, there, there are some impacts to, for example, you might see more solar panels and those sorts of things, but staff generally saw those as, as part of those benefits, so.
Well, the biggest trade-off is there's less parking. I mean, that's, should be right there, there's less parking.
Sure.
Which, you know?
So, that would be another trade-off, or increased density is another trade-off, too.
Well, when you both increase density and reduce parking. I don't know. Welcome to downtown Iowa City. Question, can we get, go back to the electric vehicle setups? I guess I'm concerned about having those in the parking, in the parking structures, because you hear the batteries exploding, and is there any thought given to having them, those stations off, towards the back of a parking lot, or any regulations for how they're set up?
So, as, as currently proposed, we did not look at where those EV-ready spaces should be. EV readiness is more tied towards the way that the electric grid is constructed, so it doesn't involve batteries currently.
Well, it would if a car is connected.
If a car is there, the car, yeah.
And it seems that there's a lot of problem with getting those, if they catch fire, there's a problem getting those fires put out?
Sure.
So, if they're connected to a building, that you immediately have a problem with fire?
Mm-hmm.
So, is there any thought given to where those would be located on a parking lot or near a structure or?
As currently proposed, no.
Okay.
My, my understanding of the batteries is a lot of that's tied to electric, electric bikes, sorts of things, e-bikes, that's where I've heard of it, but that, that's something that i- if, if it's a concern for you, you know, you, I would recommend that the, that you look at providing recommendations.
Several on the news lately that, where they've exploded and they can't get the fires out, and, yeah, so I'm, just a concern.
So, in, in terms of, just continuing with the analysis, consistency with the comprehensive plan, you know, the comprehensive plan, the basis of it is really sustainability, and it really focuses on tracking, measuring, and reducing energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. Part of that is looking at our climate action plan as well, which has some pretty aggressive climate action goals, looking at reducing carbon emissions by 45% from 2010 levels by 2030, looking at achieving net zero emissions by 2050. So, some of the reasons that we approached this amendment was to try and reach some of those goals, looking at things like renewable energy systems, electrification, higher energy conservation standards, and also encouraging EV. So, that's really where this comes from, looking at trying to, to lead towards some of those green initiatives that the city wants to see. But, based on that, staff would like to recommend that Title 14 zoning and Title 15 land subdivision be amended, as illustrated in Attachment 1 of the packet, to enhance land use regulations related to solar energy systems, and to further implement the city's goals related to climate action. But I'm happy to answer any more questions, of course, I'm sure that you have lots, so.
All right, thank you, Kirk. Now is the opportunity for staff, commission members to ask questions of staff on this item. First one that comes to mind, Kirk, while you were doing this, is if, if I'm correct, you said this is administrative review, so there wouldn't be a public hearing associated with it, correct?
With the density bonus or parking redu-, the incentives, no.
Yep, and, and I'm fine with that. My concern is, when neighbors, as you well know, Iowa City, there's been lots of concerns from different people opposed to projects because their view shed is interrupted. So, I, I would, I would guess this would be one of those areas, too, where people don't like the look of PV panels and accessory items. So, there would be no mechanism for these, for neighbors to, to be able to stop a project related to just not liking the view, since it's just an administrative process.
The only where, the only place there would be a forum would be in the minor modification, there is a administrative hearing where the public can present their views.
Where, where does that occur?
That would be if, if you're requesting flexibility from the standards for mechanical structures.
So, would that be a Board of?
It would, that would be staff.
So, but who, where's the public hearing held?
It's held in City Hall.
So, with just staff, you just, okay, I just couldn't understand where.
Yeah.
If it'd be the Board of Adjustment or who else?
It's an odd hybrid process, but, yeah. For, for most, for the density, for the incentives, which would be the density bonus and parking reduction, there would not be. For any of the other waivers, most of them, other than the minor modification, would also be strictly administrative without a public hearing, correct?
Any other questions?
Sorry, can I just add to Kirk's response to that, too? I just want to note that if the concern is view sheds, for the most part, solar panels are already allowed administratively, so there would, there's currently no process for a neighbor to complain about a neighbor's solar panel.
All right.
I have a question. So, with EV spaces, so there's going to be a minimum requirement of 20% of EV, kind of ready spaces, right? And are there any requirements for ADA EV spaces?
There are not.
Okay, I would like to see part of that 20%, some percentage dedicated to ADA EV.
If I understood you right, this is, wouldn't cover public lands?
Um, could you give me an example?
Water Works Park.
So, Water Works Park, it would still be regulated as it currently is, so right now, within public zones, solar energy systems are required by special exception, so it would have to go to the Board of Adjustment. Actually, it might be allowed provisionally, but it would have to be decided by, in, in the case of Water Works Park, it's council-owned, so they would have to write off on it. Yeah, it is provisionally allowed.
And accessory is allowed by right.
And accessory is allowed by right. So, if it's tied to a different use, like a open space, it would be allowed by right. So, if the school wanted to, to add a large, you know, solar array that's accessory, then they would just have to show that they meet the standards, for example.
So, I'm just thinking back to Water Works Park. What it, could, could that solar system be put in Water Works Park without a public hearing, without public comment?
I believe it would still have to go through council because it's public land. Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong.
That would probably be considered utility scale. You know, I don't know quite what sort of project you're envisioning, but this, these regulations, you know, aren't about the utility scale solar fields that you would see.
Okay, there was a couple of years ago, Water Works Park solar plan within American Energy, which was quite large, it seemed to me, so.
Yeah, right, that's not what we're talking about really tonight.
Yeah, we're, we're not adjusting those requirements, but in public zones, they are allowed provisionally, so, I mean, the, the reason there was a hearing, I believe, was because it was public land, not because, because it was city-owned land. That's my understanding of it, at least. It's not because of the special exception requirements.
There were, I think there were code amendments that were adopted around that time.
That was the 2019 amendments that were adopted, was initially, I think, to look at something like that, because at the time, basic utility uses were not allowed in public lands, they are now as well.
Okay.
So, that's something else that's a bit different than it has been, but again, we're not really touching the utility scale, because we think that the 2019 code amendments that we made were adequate, and they still stand today.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Can you go to the text of the, of the packet that we got? Maybe I misread this, because from what you've said now, I think I might have, and it's the bottom of page four of that, of the, of this conversation, not, not the.
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan. And it says, it's about the screening of electrical vehicle charging station with plantings, and I just don't understand why they have to be screened, and we aren't screening the solar things, and it's sort of hard to screen something and then park a car there. It's at the bottom of page four, four, where it says 14-4C-29-2.
Of the, the actual code amendment. Sure, so, this was, I mean, that is the current standard, is that they have to be screened as an accessory mechanical structure. We did not include waiving screening requirements for EV charging stations only for solar.
An EV charging station is a lot littler to look at than a solar panel.
Sure, the, the reason we looked at solar panels was mostly because of solar access, where if you have a variable screen, it's going to affect the amount of light that a solar panel gets. That was why we looked at solar panels and not EV charging stations.
So, what if you had an older duplex that was on a big lot, you know, a ranch-style duplex, and they had single-car garages, and, you know, they decided to put EV charging stations, and there, and there was extra parking pads on either side of those single-car garages, and they decided to put their EV charging stations outside the garage instead of inside. You have to screen that?
Currently, yes.
And, and under this? No.
Solar would not need to be screened.
Not solar, EV charging stations.
Oh, if, that would have to be screened.
So, you're putting, you're trying to put an EV charging station.
Yeah, if it's outside.
Outside of your house.
If it's visible from the street, it would have to be screened, currently.
But then how do you drive up to it? I don't understand this, how it can work.
Screened from the public right-of-way. So, in the same way that if you have a parking lot.
Yeah, but the public dri-, I mean, you usually have a driveway that's going up.
Oh, you're saying that's straight up from the street?
Sure.
Okay.
It's beside your house.
Sure.
And you have a double-wide drive, but only a single-car garage, or no garage at all. It just doesn't make sense to me that you would have to screen that.
So, it, it would have to be screened in the same way the parking area is screened, you would not screen the, the concrete there, but if it was from the side, I believe you would have to screen it, yes.
Maybe one good example is if anyone has been to the North Dodge Hy-Vee lately, they put in some new Tesla chargers by the gas station, and we required that those be screened on the Dodge street side, so they added additional landscaping along the property, the eastern property boundary.
I mean, in a commercial situation, I, I understand that, but someone who's trying to do the right thing and, and put a charging station in an older home, and I just think in many instances, they may want to put it outside their house, and I don't think it's any less attractive than, you know, these green boxes that I'm on is putting all over town. It's just, to me, they don't have to screen them, in fact, they don't want them screened. I, I, it doesn't.
Sure, so, single-family uses are exempt from that requirement, but that's the only use that's exempted from the screening requirement, as the code is currently written.
So, how about that duplex I talked about?
Duplexes would not be exempted.
Okay.
Based on the current code.
All right, well, that bothers me, I, I just don't, I don't understand why you would do that, too. Okay, but a single-family is, is exempted, so that's, helps.
Yeah, and so, this is just adding the solar to also be exempt with the single-family use. That's what the code does.
Oh, okay. All right, you answered my, I had a question about historic, and you answered that at the beginning. I'm very iffy about giving incentives for the charging stations, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the increased density, or, it's the parking, excuse me, declarify, I, to giving parking requirement incentives to add charging stations. I just can't wrap my mind around that, because it doesn't make sense to me. I don't think, I think our parking requirements are good, and I think we give them up, we should be giving them up for very good reasons, and this is a good reason, but I also think there are other ways of getting there, and I, I have a problem with the parking, you know, allowing less parking to have the parking stations, or to have the charging stations.
You mean solar energy?
No, I mean, I'm back.
We, we don't give up parking for the charging stations.
Excuse me, the solar energy, you're right, you're right.
Yes, so, solar energy, energy conservation standards that are higher, and electrification.
Do, do we give incentives for other, what other kinds of energy conservation things do we give incentives for?
We do not currently.
The parking incentives. So, this would be a first.
Correct, for, for the city of Iowa City.
Right. And if I was going to choose some energy-saving thing, I don't think this is what I'd choose. If you do solar, you're going to get an incentive, but if you install all electric everything in your building, or, you know, you use extra installation and you decrease your water consumption, all those things are just as important as the solar, to me.
So, the conservation can be used without solar, as can the water, or, not the water, excuse me.
All-electric, right, right.
So, all of those.
But we're not giving them an incentive for that.
Yeah, we are.
We are, you just said you weren't.
So.
Sorry?
With, with this amendment, it brings in those three items, the, the energy conservation code, solar energy is an option.
Okay, so that's, I didn't go read the energy conservation code, so that's in there.
Well, the energy conservation code is more about increasing the R-values on your home, so it's more environmentally efficient, or more, more energy efficient, and then 100% electrification. So, solar energy is one of the options to get a reduction, if you, if you did one of the other ones, you would also get a 10% reduction. Solar energy is just one of the ways that you can get a reduction, under that provision, up to 25% if you did all three.
And so, the staff thinks reduced parking is worth this?
I'll maybe make a. I'll maybe make a comment on this. You know, Kirk spoke to the goals in the Climate Action Plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions over time. And one of the ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is to have, you know, fewer vehicle miles traveled. So one thing that we're going to have to look at, if not now, in the future, is looking at our parking ratios and reducing parking, because there are benefits, environmental benefits to having less parking.
Yeah. We're going to have to have a new generation that doesn't like their cars. And my final comment is, now I've forgotten what it was. Oh. I would really like to see something that maybe there's a way people could get out of it if they go through a review process or something that says, okay, if you make, you get twenty percent of your parking spaces for EV charging-ready, and within five years, you're expected to have ten percent of those parking spaces with charging stations in them. Or some, some requirement that says they can't just put in this cheap conduit and, you know, twenty years from now, oh yeah, no, there's no, no, we don't do charging here. It's just a mess. We don't want to do it. I, I just, I think there should be something in there that says within a certain amount of time, they have to have, maybe when they're put in, two of them have to have charging stations in them. I don't know. But I think there needs to be, I, I, I think you've traded off the higher percentage to make them ready, which I think is great. I'm all about planning ahead. But I also think some percentage at some amount of time needs to be usable.
I think the challenge with that would be enforcement. You know, at, at that point, they've already developed their project. They've got their density bonus. What, how, what mechanism do we have to compel them to do that? Would be a challenge for the city to administer.
Well, then I'd be willing to say that they could, they, twenty percent have to be EV-ready and ten percent have to have charging stations in them, right here, right now.
That would be easier to administer, for sure.
I mean, is that out of line with what other people do?
Ten percent would be high. Parker, do you want to touch on that? The, the one, the number that comes to my mind is three percent that have charging stations. And I think often, I mean, twenty percent is higher than most places. That's, that's on the high end of what we saw in our comparable research. But I remember three percent was one of the items.
Yeah, ten percent would be high.
Yeah, would you speak to it?
Ten percent would be high. What you're referring to, a scaling percentage, was an example that a city showed, starting at two percent required. And every five years, the ordinance requires that that doubles. So year one, two percent, year five, four percent, year ten, six percent, and so on.
That sounds great.
That, that was the only example in our research that showed a scaling percentage.
Enforce it.
And, and on that one, that was not that we go back and look at ones that were approved previously. It's that, that standard ratchets up over time within the code. So, we, we don't go back, they don't go back and look at it. It's just that, that percentage increases in the code over time. So it, you're basically presetting your course without having to constantly revisit your code for it. That, that's what that one is.
Right. So projects developed in the first year would have to have two percent. And then they're done. Pro, after the code is adopted, in like year one, it would be a certain percentage.
I see.
Yeah.
Projects built in year three.
So it's not that year one project never has to get more?
Never escalates.
No.
If I understand that correctly.
Although it would become non-conforming at that point. So if there's a major improvement to the property that triggers, you know, addressing.
What does a charging station cost? Not the infrastructure, but the station.
Bringing in the ringer.
All right.
Hello, this is so fun. I'm Sarah Gardner. I'm the Climate Action Coordinator for the city of Iowa City. A charging station for, the costs vary based on the charging level. What we typically see in commercial properties or at apartments or condominiums would be a Level Two charger. The costs for that tend, and of course, everything's been affected by the supply chain, but tend to be around two thousand dollars per charging station. We in our office have been working with apartment, apartments and condominiums in Iowa City to try to figure out how to overcome the barriers for putting in electrical veh, electric vehicle charging. Because one of the things we know is that eighty percent of charging happens at a person's place of residence. And next year, in the state of Iowa, a sales tax is going to be levied on all commercial charging in public spaces. So our renters who have to charge at public stations will have to start paying a tax that homeowners don't to charge at home. So this is really sort of a package of trying to figure out how to equitably deploy electric vehicle charging at these residences. The reason, I think, that EV readiness was chosen for this is that running that conduit now, at the time we are building a parking lot or building a, a parking ramp, can cost as little as five hundred dollars to the project cost. It's very cheap. And it allows then the property owner the opportunity to put in those charging stations as the demand for them increase, pardon me, increases over time. So it's a, I think this is what Kirk meant when he said it was a relatively cost-effective intervention to put in the wiring now and to put in the charging stations later. I think it's worth noting that in our outreach to apartments and condominiums, the city does have a rebate program in place to help with the cost of installing those charging stations. So that if someone chooses then to put in a charging station, they can get a rebate currently from Mid-American that will help cover the cost of that charging station. If they're retrofitting a property, they can get an incentive from the city to help with the installation costs. And this really addresses the new construction end of it, saying, why don't you go ahead and put in that wiring while you're building now? So that two years or five years down the road, the city isn't shouldering that much heavier burden of retrofitting for the wiring. What we're seeing in the retrofits that we've been talking to landlords about, because of the trenching and boring involved in putting in that additional conduit, is an increased cost that can run up to ten thousand dollars to retrofit that parking space, as opposed to just putting in a few hundred dollars' worth of wiring at the time of construction. So it's really comprehensive.
Yeah, I understand. But my concern is that there will never be charging stations in these places too. And, you know, I mean, come on, not all landlords in Iowa City have the best reputations. I, I would really like to see a language that says you're required to do twenty percent and a minimum of one or ten percent of the stations have to have charging stations in them. I mean, that, so if they, they put in ten, they got to have one charging station that's there on day one.
I guess I want to be the devil's advocate. If I want to fill up my car, my vehicle, I have to go to the service station. But if I have an electric car, why would I, why would, why would you have to have a charging station for me at my building?
Because the time difference, there is a time difference. When, when you go to the gas station, it's like a few minutes. But sometimes electric cars can charge for hours.
And, and how do they, how, how do you pay for that? Who pays for that electricity to charge that vehicle? How is it billed to that customer?
It would be, the property owner would pay for it as, I mean, I'm sure that they could do their own meter for it and allocate it that way.
If a parking meter is, if a parking space is allocated to a condo or an apartment, then then it would be possible that, that that electricity, just like, you know, they can, they pay for their own air conditioning, if they choose to run an air conditioner or not.
But that's their unit. That's not the apart, so each location would have to have their own EV station?
In my mind, it would be more similar to renting a parking space. But in this case, you're renting a parking space where you also have an electric charger.
Okay.
And so you would know where.
So that would automatically go on my electric bill?
I, I would assume. I mean, it would.
I, I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it, it would all depend on how the landlord structured it, I imagine. If it's a landlord situation, or if it's an owner situation, then that's, then it would go on your electric bill.
For example, my previous employer, they had charging stations that you didn't have to pay. So you could go and charge your car and then.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen if everybody has an electric car. That's not going to happen. So I guess I'm asking, you know, what happens in the future when everybody has these electric cars? How does this, how's this going to work? How do you charge me for what I'm getting? I know what I pay now for gas.
It's metered, right? The line is metered. So however the property owner chooses to do that. If they want to provide it as an incentive to their employees for free, that's up to them. If they want to pass it off to their tenants as, you know, part of rent, if they want to, it would be subject to that kind of contractual relationship.
Yeah, I could even see like a charging station in, in a homeowner's association and then it's, you know, for everyone's use. And then it's included in the HOA fees. Like, you know.
It seems to me it'll be an incentive, like land owner, land. People who own the, the buildings and renting them out will have an incentive just because of public pressure.
Well, I mean, it's, it's coming, but it's probably decade or twenty years from now before there's so many electrical vehicles. But if we don't build the infrastructure, it'll be a lot harder and expensive to make it happen then. So I think it's great that we're doing it.
I agree. I'm just curious.
It will be a real incentive if people move into the place and say, oh my God, I can get an electric vehicle because they have a charging station. You know, right now. I mean.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
So I, I have one more question. So there was, if I understood correctly, there is like no restrictions for the, for the coverage of the ground, right? Right? For the percentage of the coverage of the ground with solar?
Currently under the zoning code? No.
So what was the change? Because you said that there's.
So, so the, the change in that case is more of a clarification.
Okay.
It is saying that solar panels are not a building, which means that the building coverage standard doesn't apply to them.
Okay.
So it, it's another one of those things where it's clarifying, because to figure that out, you have to look in definitions. I mean, with this, you'll still have to look in definitions, but it's, that's one of the clarificatory changes, rather than removing an actual barrier, I would say.
I have one question about regarding the standards from the International Energy Conservation Code. How's that different than LEED certification? I know LEED certification is voluntary, but people understand LEED certification and, but the, the standards, it, it just seems, I, I guess I just don't understand it very well.
Yeah. Well, as you may recall, the city of Iowa City didn't investigate adopting a higher energy code than is currently exists at the state level. And that ability was preempted by the state. So what this does is allow us to incentivize it since we can't mandate that building, or builders build to that code. It's a little different from LEED in that it has prescriptive levels. So for example, in attic insulation, under the current state code, I think you have to build to an R forty-two or R forty-ish, somewhere in there, insulation level. And the most recent international building code requires an R sixty level for our area. So it's just a list of building standards that folks follow. The difference being that with LEED, it's more of a menu of options and you pick and choose from different categories to get the rating that you want, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, I guess that was actually the root of my question. So, you know, like LEED, silver, gold, platinum. Obviously platinum is the most energy efficient. So the standards, is that just like a baseline? So it's actually, and I, I won't, probably not correct, but it's more like equivalent to like a LEED silver. It's, it's just a, a minimum standard. It's not a higher standard.
That's correct. It's minimum standards, but higher than what we currently have.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this agenda item?
Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Now is the opportunity for anybody in the public to address the commission on this particular agenda item. Is there anybody in the public who would like to share their thoughts with us on this? Could just come forward, sign in, state your name?
My name is Patrick Streit. I think the density and parking incentives are just backwards. Like, if you increase the amount of density, you're increasing the amount of demand for traffic. And then if you're decreasing the amount of parking lots, it's just spreading the demand for traffic to other places and it's burdening those other places. If anything, the parking requirements should go up when you increase the density. And that's just my only comment.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission on this particular item? Second call for public comment? Seeing none. No one approaching the podium. We'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this agenda item?
I move.
So you have a motion, Padron. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Elliott. Discussion?
I would like to make an amendment. I was trying to find what that language would be. Maybe the staff can help me. An amend, I proposed an amendment that says that one percent, two percent, two percent or a minimum of one station must have a charging station hooked up to it of the twenty percent of the parking spaces that are going to be EV-ready.
I, I get that. But I guess my thought is this is a brand-new ordinance for something it hasn't done before. And since it is a, a, an ordinance, an amendment to the existing code, we'll be able to amend it as we go along. So it doesn't have to be perfect right now.
Yeah, but if we don't amend it for three, amend it for three or four years, then all those things get grandfathered in and they never have to do it.
I will say, I thought the same thing. I'm like, I absolutely agree that it makes sense to put this in right up front. But isn't there some minimum standard? I think one for every development might be a little onerous, because if it's a smaller number of spaces. But I, it, it makes sense, like if there's, and I'll make up a number, if there's ten or more spaces, at least one of those has to be EV-ready now when they construct it. I don't know a magic number though, but I, I, I am sympathetic to asking staff to investigate some language on that. Anne, do you have any thoughts? I mean, I'm sure you guys had internal discussions about this and if you could just share with us. Because I'm sure there's a reason why you didn't set a standard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're opposed to adding a requirement. We were just talking that currently that twenty percent EV-ready kicks in when you have a parking area that has five or more parking spaces. So in, I guess in your example, it would be in that situation for the, the, a five-spot parking area, it'd be one would have the charger.
Right.
Yeah.
And another reason I'm pretty sympathetic to that is with the federal legislation that's come through, there's lots of money coming down the pipe and the city is doing incentives right now. So it's not like it's going to be financially onerous. There's a lot of money coming down to assist people with these EV charging stations. Am I misconstruing that?
Sorry, I was doing some math on my phone. I, I missed what you said.
Just there's a lot of money coming from the federal government that's going to be available to assist people with EV parking, EV charging stations. So concerns about being financially onerous to develop, or I think, won't be true, that financing will be available, or financial assistance. Because I only know what I read in the paper. They say that one of the priorities is expanding the national network of EV charging stations.
The rulemaking isn't final, but we do anticipate there will be funding coming related to EV charging under the Inflation Reduction Act. under the Inflation Reduction Act, yes.
Well, then if it's all right with the motion maker, Maria and the secondor, Maggie, could we just ask that staff develop some language to go to council about that at least one of the spaces out of five must have an EV charging station in it, active at the time?
Well, I, I mean, one out of five, if you have 20, that's four, eh, which is higher than what I was saying.
I hate to set a standard when we haven't thought through it.
Right.
But.
I mean, 2% seemed to be a standard that people, that other, some communities have adopted, which is why I said 2% or a minimum of one.
Um, I was just going to suggest if you want staff to evaluate kind of the impacts of adding that $2,000 cost, we could, we could do that and bring it back at the next meeting.
Well, we've done it before where we've just asked staff to develop some language as it moves forward and we've approved it that night. Is that a problem?
Is there a time crunch here?
Yeah, I'd say I have no idea if time's of the essence at all, if you want to get this.
I don't think time is of the essence. You know, we really haven't analyzed eh, the, the cost impacts of adding eh, to, you know, I guess based on what Sarah said, $2,000 to, $2,000 plus if it was only one, one charging station and what that, what the impact of that would be. I don't think we can speak to that at this point.
Eh, I, I have one comment. So the eh, financial impact, eh, I, I don't remember what you just said, the eh, monetary impact, right? We're saying if they're going instead of building, I don't remember the numbers, but if they're moving from building 15 units to moving to building 20 units because of the parking reduction, there, there's a huge increase in their gains, right? So then $2,000 for an EV charger, I think I would be okay with like, I don't know, it's just a comment.
Just eh, the EV charging station is not tied to the incentive. So eh, if no one's using the incentive, they still have to provide the EV ready charging stations. Those are two separate kinds of things.
Oh, okay, sorry, I missed something.
Yeah, eh, eh, I meant to correct that earlier too, because I know that you.
Okay.
I think that there is some confusion there.
Okay.
So there's incentives that are tied to the three items and then there's EV charging is a different thing. That would just be a base requirement in all future development, period.
Okay, eh, which is better.
So.
Yeah, that's better.
Since you made the motion, would you be amenable to withdrawing the motion? Have staff come back with recommendation? And then we could also say if, I'm also very sensitive to if there's a, say, like, there's 30 cre, spaces created, then one of those has to be an ADA accessible space with a charging station. You know, to eh, some kind of scale that works.
Yeah, you can, eh, you can look at the California eh, code because we have restrict, eh, we have minimum requirements for ADA EV charging stations. I can send it to you, Kirk.
Could you say that again? I'm having kind of a hard time hearing.
Sorry, I was eh, telling Kirk that he can look at the California code because we have, I work for California and we have minimum requirements for ADA. When we put EV charging stations, we have minimum required, requirements for ADA EV charging stations.
So do you wish to retract your motion?
Yeah, so I withdraw, withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. So eh, the direction of the commission is to ask staff to come back at a future meeting on this particular eh, agenda item with recommendations to establish a standard for EV charging stations and ADA accessible spaces with charging stations. Do I have that correct? And thank you for being persistent about that. That's very good. I do too.
So there was a motion to defer, is that?
Yes, oh, well, she just withdrew her motion.
Okay, so then next should be a motion to defer.
Oh, I make a motion to defer.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have a motion to defer, is there a second to defer?
Second.
So we got a motion by Padron, trying to make this easier for the minute take, make taker. And a second by Elliott to defer agenda item number five to a future meeting to give staff an opportunity to develop recommendations based on our conversation.
Yes.
Discussion, all those in favor of deferrals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved, six to zero. Thank you, Sarah, for catching that, I appreciate it very much. Yes, item number six, consideration of meeting minutes of October 19, 2022. Are there any major additions or corrections that any member of the commission would like to make to those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So, so moved.
We got a motion by Townsend and we got a second by Craig, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those eh, for approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved, six to zero. Planning and zoning information, Anne?
Um, I just wanted to let the commission know that the McGrath subdivision, that two lot, commercial subdivision on Willow Creek Drive was approved at council last night.
Very good, thank you. And eh, before we adjourn, I just want to welcome Chad. I'm sure this conversation is kind of bewildering.
There's a lot for the first time.
It will kind of make sense after a while.
It's not a three-hour public hearing, so you really got off light.
And, and I'll be a lot more vocal going forward as far as questions, so appreciate your patience.
You're absolutely fine, but you're warmly welcomed and we're glad you're here.
Appreciate it, thanks for being.
Any other planning and zoning information items? Seeing none, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion Townsend is our second. Second Elliott, discussion, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, six to zero, thank you, everybody.